Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the January eighteenth regularly scheduled work session. Tonight we have five items on the agenda. Public is a, public comment is a flower that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill- Okay, start over. If you, if you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Are there, Don, are there any public comments for item number one?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, if you can call the, call the item, please. What's that?
Pull the mic a little closer.
Closer.
Our first agenda item is discussion regarding the creation of the Milton Greenspace Advisory Committee. Mr. Steve Prokoff.
Not just you.
Pull the mic a little closer.
I deserve that. Um, good evening, council. So, I wanted to talk about the composition, and I want, if we can focus on the composition of the Greenspace Advisory Committee. Um, I know there was discussion at our last work session regarding composition, and in my review of that, um, I tried to pick out what I thought were the main points from everybody's conversation to see if I could move, move us a little more forward towards creating this, because once we create the, uh, the composition, there's something agreed upon by the council, um, we could start taking on a lot of the legwork at the staff level along with the new group to be able to, uh, flesh out some of the other issues that we started to go into, uh, into at that last, that last meeting. Um, so I bring this before you in the hopes of being able to agree upon, uh, how you would like this group selected. Um, before you, Kathy Johnson is here again to answer any questions that you may have. Um, before you is her original presentation that she put on. Um, and I do have with me, uh, her, the flow chart that she had provided at the last meeting. Um, just to refresh your memory, we discussed several potential avenues for creating and, uh, this, the group from, uh, staff putting together a slate of potential applicants to, uh, and then presenting it to you after it was vetted by staff, um, to the traditional manner in which we have, uh, we've selected boards and commissions in the past, and that is, uh, based on your, your districts and your individual choices. Um, what I was hearing from the group, and there was, uh, there seemed to be some common ground, you, you appeared to all want to make sure that there was, um, some level of understanding of what the, of what the task would be. I think there was, uh, agreement consensus on that we should, we should have some level of, uh, I don't know, I don't know if we want to call them knowledge, skills, and abilities, but some level of expertise in the area, but I had got mixed, um, responses back regarding how we would make those determinations and who would select those people. Um, so my recommendation back to the council was that we consider kind of a hybrid of the two. Maybe staff, uh, goes out and creates an open solicitation, um, from members of our community, based upon, uh, some type of agreed upon criteria that you would like to see, whether it's a, it's a host of, of questions, um, or maybe we leave that open, maybe we create the questions, and then based on what we get back, you take a look and say, okay, we'd like to see these types of abilities, and then we put that before you, and then at that point you can determine, okay, we would like to, we'd like to bring in these members at large, we would like to go more than seven, less than seven, but at least it gives you the ability to make sure that you're appointing the correct people. I had, uh, as, at the staff level, we certainly can look at that from an objective view for, for KSAs and things that you may, you may deem appropriate, but I think it would rob you of the opportunity to, to look deeper into the candidates and, and your knowledge of the community members. So I lea, I open that now to you for, um, for open discussion on what you would like to see, um, and, uh, if we can get to that agreement tonight, if, um, we'll be, we'll be in a much better position to move this forward.
Okay. Council discussion. Matt?
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, having a standard for what we want general is good. Obviously, the better applicants we get based on some questions, I think, would make a slate the staff can pick, okay. Having talked to some constituents in my district, though, one thing we're very concerned about is having equal representation by the districts. Um, so that way, it is spread around, but still we, everybody's okay with having a standard and the staff making that selection, and I think they'd be okay. Um, as far as what questions those go, we talked about having professional experience, business acumen, um, you know, the general things we would think of about people that can keep confidentiality when making agreements or these discussions and being able to work in a group, um, so long as that there might be equal representation among the people doing it. So, in general, that's where I'd like, maybe we can start the discussion.
Karen?
Personally, I'd like to see staff do the initial screening, gather the information on each of the candidates, put together a list of candidates that they feel like are qualified, and then us as a council decide on which of those five or seven candidates we feel like together are most qualified. And that way, we're going to get candidates on it that, uh, members of the committee on it that we know have the support of not just one council member, but the support of the entire council or majority of the council, and that also we know will be able to work together and, and keep things confidential and look after just the best interests of the city as a whole. So I would love for staff to do the initial work, present all the candidates to us, and for all of us to vote on our top five or top seven candidates and the top vote getters, you know, knowing where candidates are, are living, because I think it is important to have people from different areas, but then we can decide on which candidates we feel like would make the best team to put together for this. This is, they got twenty-five million dollars to spend, so we want to make sure it's done right.
Right.
I think this is, uh, part of a larger discussion, and it involves selecting people not only for this, uh, board or commission, whatever we're going to call it. Uh, I think this speaks towards, uh, making selections for all of the other boards and commissions in this city. And there are certain things going on amongst the different boards, and, uh, one of the biggest items is, uh, attendance records, and, uh, some of these boards can't even, uh, form a quorum because of lack of attendance. So, I'd like to see this, this wider discussion come up, uh, maybe down the road, and, and Steve has brought up the suggestion that we all talk about it in, uh, possibly a work session or retreat, too, that, uh, we, uh, consider suitability, I guess, for, uh, seats on these different boards, committees, and commissions. People who are, are truly interested in making a difference, who have certain set of qualifications, and, uh, who are willing to show up, and I understand the, uh, the issue of this community is so wrapped up in a lot of other, uh, commitments, religious, school, business, uh, everything else under the sun, and I understand trying to make all meetings, but it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a wider issue. But speaking to this one particularly, I, I go along with Karen and, and Matt's comments here, this commission is, is really special, and it's from the standpoint that we're, we're really dealing with some of the long-term issues as far as parks and trails and green space that are out there, and we need to, we need to move swiftly because we're running out of that available, uh, property out there. But we also need to move very cautiously, I think. And I, I think there's some legal pitfalls out there. I think there's opportunities for conflicts of interest, and, uh, we certainly want to avoid any, any semblance of any, uh, situations like that. I would, uh, support staff, uh, going through the original initial review of applicants and, uh, making a cut from there, uh, whether we establish the criteria for those members, uh, here tonight, or, or get the help of staff and, uh, relying on staff and having them come back and rec, make, make recommendations as to the qualifications for, uh, sitting on this board. So I, that's my proposal, is, is to, uh, come up here with maybe some rough, uh, qualifications here tonight and getting staff's input on, uh, further qualifications for dealing with this issue. And we're talking about twenty-five million dollars here, so it's not chump change that we're talking about. We need to be very, uh, straightforward, transparent, but transparent to the extent that, uh, we're dealing in confidential, uh, situations here as far as property acquisition go. I have another point, but I'll pass.
Um, so I agree with everybody. Obviously, this is a lot of, a lot of money we're dealing with, and it can either be a huge success or a colossal failure based on, based on who's on these boards. I do agree with Matt, that I think that we need to make sure, um, at least there is representation from every district. I don't know if we're, if we're looking at some technical type qualifications, we might not be able to unfortunately get equal representation, but I think that, that one of the criteria at least needs to be that, that all three of the districts are at least represented on there. Um, I don't have a problem with staff, um, whittling this down and bringing us, you know, the top, you know, whatever it is, twelve, ten, fifteen, that we can then, then choose from, uh, from that point. So I don't know how, how that kind of, how that, um, I hate to debate that in an open, you know, an open meeting for, for folks, you know, offending folks and stuff like that, so that would need to be thought out. I don't know if that's executive session type of stuff or not, or, or what, but, um, you know, we need to kind of maybe think about how that, how we would cross that bridge at some point.
Rick?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, this is your meeting, not mine.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, just, just for the thoughts on that, too. I mean, we're talking about qualifications of people that we would like to have as well, so what would those qualifications be? Um, I don't like to put us into a box, you know, I'm, I'm very open to, if staff thinks of an idea of a qualification that is something we don't think of here tonight, I'm okay with that, you know, on that end, but obviously, we know there are people that have financial experience, whether CPA or financial advisors, real estate as well, you know, whether it be from that perspective. Um, I think we need, um, you know, some, some semblance of, um, just general experience in those categories to start. Business acumen would also be critical. The question is, is, there's lots of different businesses out there, so, you know, the more if it's, if it's private equity or if it's things like that, there might be some opportunities there to understand financial implications of, you know, what we're buying, what we're not. But also, there's a place, too, for, for those who have knowledge on, on greenspace issues. Um, legal lawyers would have some experience with that, um, you know, things of that nature. So, as far as rattling off a list of some criteria, I think those are pretty obvious for the most part, but I might get us started for thinking of some qualifications that might make sense. And we're talking generally professional. Um, you know, it could also be, um, you know, volunteer, depending on their extent, um, and that's something that, of course, we as a council would have to decide, is whether that extent is qualification enough to be on a board like this, but I'm still open to, the more people we can get of a slate to choose from, in my mind, with some of those qualifications is what I would look for.
In our solicitation, uh, we could keep the, keep it more towards a, an open-ended questionnaire. So we could get, um, fairly open, we'll get more dialogue-type responses, you know, give us the ability to say, you know, I never would have thought that we, we needed X, Y, and Z, but these could, if we look at this in the context of the larger group, that's kind of the missing puzzle piece.
Sure.
And we might not, we might not know that if we keep our, uh, our questionnaire very focused, or we predetermine the, the, what kind of KSAs we're looking for.
Right.
Would, would that be a situation where we have a questionnaire and maybe bounce it off of us independently, and then we come back to you and say thumbs up, thumbs down, or something, or we have to do it in a public forum?
Yeah, Matt, Councilman Coons, I think that would be, that would be fine. I really like the idea from a legal standpoint of, of, candidly, the questionnaire i- is actually not to narrow the field, it's to get to know-
The candidates.
Right. It's to get to know the candidates on it, because inevitably, what, what you'll find is that the more limiting you are, you're going to miss great candidates who are going to have a unique skill set that's exactly what you're looking for, and candidly, Councilmember Lusk mentioned it, one of the things you want is just dedication.
Right.
I mean, all the credentials in the world don't matter if you don't show up.
Right.
And, and so that's, that's one thing, and from a legal perspective, I mean, obviously, the ultimate decision is going to rest with the full council, so you want people, candidly, if you were to ask, you know, from a legal perspective, what my criteria would be, it'd be sober judgment, seriousness about the issue. Um, now, obviously, I hope those are baseline criteria, then being professional, having business acumen, being ethical, that's obviously a part of it as well, but, uh, I agree with the, uh, the approach of just a questionnaire, just to get to know these people, these individuals. Karen?
Personally, I believe it could be as open-ended as, you know, why do you want to serve? Why do you feel like you're qualified to serve? Do you have the time commitment that will be necessary in order to serve on the committee? And, you know, you may get one-sentence answers from some people, and you may get novels from others. We probably want somebody that answers it somewhere in between, but, um, you know, I think you keep the questions open, it allows people to, to give you as much information as they want to give you, or as little as they want to give you.
Well, I agree, I agree, Karen and Matt, you know, because, you know, we, we want to have some, some base, you know, a little bit higher than the baseline criteria, but, but, you know, we might not know what somebody did in a former life or something like that, and, you know, we have just an, an essay application, uh, type of process, we can find that out. Um, one of the things, you know, you mentioned, you know, about the time, time commitment, do we know what that, what that might entail, you know, so we can at least sort of say, hey, you know, once a month, four hours, you know, two-hour meetings or something like that, just to give folks that idea as well?
I think initially upfront, um, as we create, as, just like when you create other boards, I've, I've been on the, in the creation of, of some not-for-profits, and usually upfront, your commitment is tremendous. Um, and then you get into the regularity of the meetings and things like that. Um, it's, uh, I remember I was on a, on a land acquisition board, something not that dissimilar to this, um, and upfront, creating all the bylaws and all that kind of stuff was a, was a huge task, but ultimately, it peters out into, into monthly or, or bi-monthly meetings.
Yeah. I do have one question, and, and this is more of a legal one, but obviously, because we're dealing with twenty-five million dollars, a very important, you know, a purpose on this, but should we require a background check on everybody on this? I would assume, I'm thinking so, but I'm just, because we're dealing with financial information, we're dealing with private information, we're dealing with a lot of things.
From a legal perspective, there's no requirement to do that. In fact, candidly, in my experience, I have not seen a lay committee be subjected to a background check, and my concern would be that would be intimidating. Now, if it's intimidating, maybe that's a good reason.
That's a good thing.
Um, I, I will concede the point, but my initial instinct is, would probably not be to recommend that.
Okay, that's just a question.
It's fair, it's a fair question.
Right.
Particularly given the dollar. Bill?
One of the points we've discussed here also is, uh, selecting an appointee from each of the different districts. Um, we have a couple other boards out there where we select, uh, appointees at large. Uh, one of the most recent one here is, uh, the Equestrian Committee. And I think, uh, my opinion is that we should be concentrating on qualifications, number one. Where an individual lives within the city, I think, should be secondary. Uh, anybody that we do select for this, uh, this committee, I think will have the best interests of everyone in mind. Uh, but I think qualifications should be, uh, first and foremost in the selection process. Um, one other thought, and we've talked about it, uh, previously, too, is, uh, the issue of having any board or committee making a recommendation to council. And, uh, if we're endowing, I guess, a committee like this with making some serious selections and recommendations to council, um, it, uh, kind of puts us in a, uh, kind of damned-if-you-do, damned-if-you-don't situation, I guess, to use the vernacular. Uh, it puts us in a, a tough position here, is, uh, if we don't approve it, it's almost like an obligation, I think, with, uh, a committee like this. And I understand with the other boards and commissions in the city, where Planning Commission has made recommendations to council, and DRB has, and some of the other committees have made, uh, recommendations to some of the other committees, like, uh, the DRB to, uh, the BZA, for example. And if we turn down or disregard recommendations like this, uh, it has a, a morale issue, I guess, to put it plainly. And I don't want to see people get disheartened, uh, for putting in a, a lot of effort, time and effort in making decisions and just having them turned down by possibly us, and I see it on other boards and commissions, too. Uh, but, uh, we're asking these people to do yeoman's job out there in coming up with some of the, uh, best recommendations that they probably can, and this is serious stuff. And I don't want to waste people's time on any board or committee. Um, so I'm, I'm really, uh, concerned about, uh, not only the dedication, but the qualifications of, uh, members of this committee. I can't, I can't stress it anymore, I guess.
Steve, is, could staff actually work on giving us an initial scope and questionnaire or application, come back to council to say, here's what we're recommending, what do you think about this, and then we tweak that as far as what's going to go out to start doing the solicitation process?
I think we could do that with a, with a fairly quick turnaround.
Okay.
Um, the only thing I, I do want to add is, uh, the other piece of that recommendation regarding, uh, attaching, whether, whether it be a, a hired consultant or some type of expert in the field that isn't, that, that can just help with the, with technical assistance, um, in an advisory capacity. We have, we have a certain amount of expertise in-house, um, and this is also predicated on, on that this person exists. I, I don't know that in fact it does, or this person does, but if this person does exist, does the council have any interest in potentially contracting with, you know, with, with that type of person or entity to help with the technical assistance with this group?
Karen?
I think we need to wait to see who we put on the committee, to see whether or not we have that technical caliber of person, or if we can need to go outside for it. I'd prefer to have a volunteer that's willing to be on the committee to do it, so we don't have to pay for it. You can use more of the money just to actually purchase land or easements or whatever.
Yeah, I would concur. I think that, um, um, obviously, from a staff perspective, when you're providing a slate, if you feel you're providing a slate that doesn't have the qualifications that might achieve success on that end, and then your recommendation might be to look for further technical expertise to help them along, um, I think that then, at that point, you should introduce that along with the slate. Um, if you think, though, that the slate of people that is there that we can pass with some of the qualifications we talked to you tonight are, um, are worthwhile and we don't need that, then that can be your choice, and I think I would leave that up between you and Kathy, um, to come up with that conclusion, you know, on the greenspace aspect. So I'm okay with that, if that makes sense, but I would rather, I think Karen's right, come up with the slate first, we'll make that decision at that time.
I, I'd support that, too. After all, uh, a lot of the other efforts here that we have, uh, we hire consultants who have the expertise in their particular fields, transportation consultants, uh, parks consultants, everything else, so it's not out of the, uh, ordinary to hire somebody that has that type of expertise. But I'd, I'd go along with Karen's recommendation that, let's see who we draw in out there. We, we may have that person as a volunteer, which would be super. Uh, but further to that, I'd, I'd like to ask Ken the question, what do you see as a pitfall, or are the pitfalls of, uh, having, uh, a committee like this?
Well, actually, it's funny, I was listening to you, and you were kind of making your earlier comments, and of course, that almost begs a bigger issue, which is the issue I call council and committee creation 101, and that is, there are ramifications for creating, you know, separate organizations to make recommendations other than you. Um, obviously, Milton has plenty of them, every government in Georgia has plenty of them to make recommendations and things of that nature, but just be mindful, particularly within the context of land use, there's no requirement that you, that you do this. Uh, so this needs to be a, a very, you know, well-thought-out, deliberate decision to vest this recommending authority in a group other than you, because, you know, my experience has been, um, having done this in other jurisdictions as well, uh, is that, um, some of the points that you made, Councilmember Lusk, are correct. Uh, a certain inertia builds up. By the time a recommendation makes it to this council, there will have been a lot of work by a lot of good civic-minded people in your community, um, a lot of hours away from home, uh, missing sports, and again, you know the drill of, of what all of our civic leaders and civic-minded folks do, and then you'll be faced with a recommendation, and so your instinct as humans is going to be to, to go along with that recommendation. And so, I, I, and again, I'm not trying to dissuade you at all, I'm just trying to suggest to you that I, I, I have seen governing bodies, not, not this council necessarily, but governing bodies really feeling hamstrung by that. Uh, that may not be where they want to go, but on the other hand, they're concerned to go against the recommendation of a group of folks. So I say that's not to dissuade you, but simply to say, if you are going to make a recommendation or a determination to set up an independent committee to make these recommendations, just be, be mindful that there will be obviously a lot of wheels then set in motion. Experts will be brought to bear, not, obviously, you know, you know, I've gone through land acquisition of this type before, I know the city manager has gone through land acquisition of this kind before, and all of those resources will be then brought to bear to help that committee that you've created, and so by the time it gets to you, I mean, on one parcel of property or one greenspace acquisition or one conservation easement, there could have been sixty, seventy, a hundred man-hours put into that by the time it gets to you. What are you going to do then?
And I think may, maybe, we're, we're thinking way down the road, which is, is good to consider that, but one of the things I think we need to look at is what can be brought forward to us in a confidentiality standpoint, so we're aware, so we don't often get the final recommendation. If something's being pursued, we've got a chance to think and let, as they're going through the process, we're aware of it, because I think it's hard of us, and when you get the final, well, here it is, here's our recommendation, and then we've got to consider without having any of the, the thought process, but that's something, maybe you can help us with, what's, what's appropriate when we start to form this and go through that process.
Well, right, there's going to be, I mean, I, I heard your comments about transparency, and of course, you're right, everything government does is supposed to be transparent, but uniquely in the context of land acquisition, uh, there is a legitimate public policy reason why it's not all done in the open, because obviously, if the seller understands that we're pursuing their piece of property, the price goes up. So those, potentially, particularly those initial contacts, uh, and the initial due diligence, the initial discussions are all done in executive session, and that will be the same for this committee. This committee will have to follow the Open Meetings Act. My expectation is, is that, and I don't know that, I, I'm privy to this information yet, but I'm sure I will be, how those initial pieces of land will get to them, who's going to come up with those initial thoughts, then it'll go to them in executive session under land acquisition, it can go to you in, in land acquisition in executive session as well. There, there, we could set up a construct where you get at least an initial, oh, this is out there.
Right.
out there. Being also mindful that now we've just doubled the number of people that know that the city is interested in a particular piece of property.
Well, and that, and that's one of the other things that I made a note on, is can you work up a confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement? Because I think it's important.
Oh, yeah.
People understand, you sign this, those of us who are in business know, you can't wink, wink, tell people, because it is, it does impact the price of property and whatever, so it's got to be, you can't talk about this.
Yes.
You talk about it amongst each other, just like we have things we can't disclose from executive session.
Right.
As much as sometimes you want to, you can't, because that's what you, you've basically sworn off on. But I think that would be something, once we start to, to bring people on, that's something that they sign, they sign a non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement, so they understand exactly what their responsibilities are, what they can and cannot do.
Understood.
Bill?
Appreciate Ken's experience in this issue. And since Steve's had experience in it too, I'd like to get his take on the whole issue.
Which we...
(laughing). Forming a committee, I guess.
So I was on the Albany County, Albany County Land Bank, and what we were, we were the founding board members, and what we were tasked with doing is finding, transforming delinquent properties, taking delinquent properties that were in foreclosure, that were currently owned by the county, and putting them into the hands of, of responsible developers and, and things like that. So, little different, we have nice green space that we're trying to save, this was dilapidated buildings. But it was all about making things nice, so there is some parallel. The, so that, we had, we were actually a group of people with experience. Some of the other, other members were, there was an attorney who was my deputy mayor originally, but was also, was also a member of the county executives cabinet. There were land acquisition experts, there were other attorneys, there were bankers. We had a much larger pool to pull from, it was all of Albany County, so it was the city and the county proper. So we certainly had a large pool to pull from. We then created subcommittees of volunteers, well, we were all volunteers, but subcommittees of volunteers that we vetted, just kind of the way we're talking about. They sent us in applications, and then we vetted those for the subgroups that they would be on. And we, I was there just as we started to acquire properties, and then I came down to spend time with you. But we were, from what I understand, they are, they had, we were, we were certainly successful at the time, and from what I understand, the success has continued.
So did you have a written set of qualifications or a set of...
I don't believe, I, I could tell you the board didn't. When, when, when we were, when we were sought, we were sought for our various expertise. Fourth, I mean, I also, I had the combination of law enforcement, plus my experience in, in personal endeavors, plus they were mostly all in the city of Albany. The, but the others, they, they hand chose based on their, on their abilities, but that was not a formal application process. The subcommittees, we did create a formal application process, and it was, it was open in the way that, that I was suggesting to you, so we could get a better understanding of what they could bring to the table.
So how, how were they vetted in the final analysis?
We had a, we had a subcommittee of our group that vetted them. Not another recreated subcommittee, but a subcommittee of board members that went through the applications and chose them.
Did you involve staff in that selection?
We were staff, so it was a little, it was a little different. The only staff we really had, we were, we were partnered with Habitat for Humanity, so we kind of leveraged that staff a little bit, a little bit of county staff, but only for some, only for some legal work and, and clerical work. By and large, it was us.
So how many were on that subcommittee? And were they the ones that filled the positions that we're talking about here now?
I'd have to check back, but, I mean, we were, there was only about eight of us on the board. If I remember correctly, I think the subcommittee was only about four people that, that went and reviewed the, the applications, and it was only based upon availability.
Well, I'm talking about the committee members that actually looked at the properties, and that's the four people, that was the four people?
No, I apologize, I thought you were talking about the selection, the people who selected the people for these subcommittees. That was actua, so we had only a finite group of properties to look at, which, which made it a little bit easier. It was, it was properties that were currently owned by the county. The county did all the foreclosures. So we had, it was roughly eight hundred something properties at the time that we had to choose from. What we did is we went, so our criteria was kind of preset about what we choose from.
Sure.
They weren't, they weren't necessarily all built, some of them were vacant land, but what we did is we created criteria of how we would select. We would look at quali, we also were trying to preserve some of our historic cities, so we scored things depending on where they were, were they historic, could we, could we link these buildings together to be able to change the face of a block, things along those lines that would help us be able to choose more wisely in our, in, we also only had a finite, finite set of dollars to be able to choose, to be able to go and attack this with. So we created a criteria, which is what I would envision this group creating, and then bringing to you to, to see whether or not you agree with that criteria. And then they use that criteria to be able to judge their, their selections that they still bring back to you.
Right.
To, for you to determine whether or not you think that that is a good fit. And that is kind of how that went in our, our group as well. We had, we had people out there doing all kinds of work. We also contracted, we contracted with engineers to go look at the structures, to see how, how viable they were, were they knockdowns, did we, you know, things along those lines. But we also had community members out there in all of the areas that were trying to put these things together for us, and then come back to us with potential options.
Matt?
I think whether we should do a committee or not, I think the main element that says that we should, well, is we have to make sure we have the precautions in place, is, is time. I would love to see a focused committee that actually does go and look at what we have, because time is an element here in Milton as well, especially because of the development that we have had. And we need to come up with those solutions quickly, I think we've been called and tasked to do that. Does that mean that the council, though, should have good direction to give to that committee? Yes. I think, you know, doing the criteria, as you're talking about, whether we create it ahead of time, or they can bring it to us and we sign off on that direction, either way, it's got to be clear, I think. And the more clear it is, and that'll give them the additional time that we may not have on the council, because we're doing a lot of other things already as it is, then that would just leverage the time that we have, if we get the right team in place. And I think if we do a good team with the status that the staff can put together, I think it'd be a, a very good thing. But it really would behoove us to come up with a very clear direction of that group, and set of boundaries, freedoms and constraints of how we would like to see them operate. And, you know, so we're, we're getting clearer direction, I think, as we go through this process. I think direction we're giving the staff right now is pretty good. If you want to read back the direction, which is, you know, create a questionnaire, open with regards to criteria, come up with some of the, you know, the things that Rick had mentioned, and, you know, the, the documents that we might need to say that they are qualified from that perspective. And if we can do that, and then it's brought forth before us with your expertise, then we sign off on that, and, and then we come up with a clear direction, we're on our way.
And I, and I like the idea of what you said too, Steve. Concurrently while you're coming up with this questionnaire, Kathy and other staff could be looking at, okay, what's, let's not just try to solicit who we're going to get, once we get them on board, what do we think are at least the beginning points, like trail connectivity, I mean, some of the things that we prioritize for the green space within Milton, start to get that, that you could bring back to us at the same time to take a look at.
I think that direction is very clear.
Okay.
I think we're in it, we're well, fully move forward.
Okay. And I, I'd like to, I guess, bounce off from Karen's comment and Bill's too, is in a greater context, I think we're missing out, it's hard to find out who's interested in actually volunteering in the city, so I like your idea of doing maybe a retreat or something where we actually come up with, how are we going to start soliciting and actively go out to the community and say, if you're interested in serving, what areas are you interested in? And then make it real clear, what are the different committees, what are the opportunities that are out there? So there may be untapped resources where people are sitting out there and don't know, well, how do I get involved? Other than coming to meetings, how do I get involved if I actively want to actually serve with the city on a volunteer basis?
Sounds like a great idea.
I believe we started that several years ago.
We did.
Started a database of volunteers, and I'm not sure what happened to it, but I, I think that's very important, knowing the status of several of the boards and committees in the city now that are lacking members. I think we need to put out a renewed call and start forming that database of people who have the time, the interest, and the commitment to serve on these committees. But going back to the one at hand here, in that survey, we may want to list different skillsets out there, educational or experiential data. Of all of the boards and committees we have right now, maybe with the exception of the Equestrian Committee, the DRB has specific qualifications for membership, either an engineer, architect, landscape architect, contractor of some sort, and I think it includes real estate agents. So of the seven people, DRB right now, there are only three of them that fit those qualifications. So rather than wasting people's time, I guess, the point that I'm getting at, why don't we set forth some basic criteria for membership on this board? Land acquisition people, geologists, maybe hydrology engineers. I think we could probably come up with at least a dozen different fields out there, bankers, like you mentioned.
And I think, I think also what we'd said too is, you don't want to be too restrictive, because you might miss out on someone who's got very good community background, who's got an interest in parks or whatever, that maybe has some good ideas that don't fit a specific professional background or criteria. And you could, on the application, with the address, you could help tell, tell us what district they're in, just so we're aware of the districts. So I know most people aren't going to say, well, I'm District Three or District Two. I mean, they may not, they may not know that.
I don't, I don't think the district itself is what's most important, because
It's the right ground.
You can cross a street and be in a different district.
I know.
I think it's just we want to make sure we are representation from all parts of the city.
From around the city, I agree.
We'll provide the information regardless, you can do what you want with it as a, as a council.
Right.
I believe we can satisfy what Councilmember Lusk is looking for us to do preliminarily, and keep it, keep it broad enough so that we're not excluding the, some potential applicants that, that just didn't occur to us at the time.
Yep, okay. Any other comments? Yeah, do you think you have what you need from us, Steve?
Clearly, yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Dawn, I'd just like to also say, Don, sir, thank you for sitting in, Sudi is not here today, so Dawn's our acting city clerk. Are there any public comments for discussion item number two?
Yes, sir, we have one public comment.
Okay, if you could call it.
Tom Slatham.
If you could give us your name and your, your address, too, please.
Okay, it's Tom Statham, and I'm at thirty-one forty-nine South Highway twenty-seven in Carrollton, Georgia. I'm a property owner in Milton.
Okay.
For a number of years, about fifty-five, I think. And my question is concerning and about this steep change in the slope and the regulation that would change this late into the game of a county that's, a, a large percentage of it has already been developed, and it would injure the people and take some of their rights that are left with property, like my brothers and myself, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Dawn, could you call the second item on the agenda?
Yes. Agenda, agenda item number two, consideration of RZ sixteen zero five to create steep slope standards in chapter sixty-four, Article seventeen, Division three, site improvement standards. Ms. Kathy Field.
Good evening, I'm going to go ahead and take this one for Kathy tonight. I don't think you're coming through. Is that better? Okay, that's coming out. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the steep slopes ordinance that's being proposed. We've worked through with the Planning Commission over the last few months to try to trim this down to the extent that we can. You should have before you a hard copy of the ordinance that has both highlighted revisions as well as unhighlighted revisions. The highlighted revisions would represent those comments that were provided by the Planning Commission at their last meeting. The unhighlighted revisions represent comments from staff after that meeting, as well as, I think, some comments from our legal department. So, Dave, can you go ahead and bring that presentation up? So one of the first things we wanted to do was give you an, an overview of some of the ordinances in local jurisdictions in this vicinity, just to give you an idea about how those jurisdictions deal with steep slopes. We won't get into a lot of particulars of the ordinances, but I did want to go through and give you kind of a highlight of not only what they consider to be a steep slope, but the restrictions that may be associated with that steep slope. So the fact that they define a steep slope as a certain percentage doesn't necessarily mean that they are prohibiting all types of development on those slopes. So I'll touch on a number of those, I'll go through this relatively quickly, but I want to highlight a few things that you'll see in our ordinance as well, just to give you an idea about how some of those requirements were developed. So if you look at Fulton Counties, if we were to take Fulton Counties as it is written today, their steep slopes are broken down into several categories. Thirty-three percent to forty percent is identified as a steep slope, but only requires certain site planning and site preparation requirements on that, does not necessarily restrict you from developing on those particular slopes. Once you get above forty percent or greater is where they begin a lot of the restricted development, and requires a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to do any type of development on those slopes, over forty percent. Forsyth County, their steep slopes only applies to conservation subdivisions. You'll see that too in a number of the ordinances, that there are specific areas within those jurisdictions that probably represent more critical areas within those jurisdictions, and those steep slopes apply in those areas only. And so in Forsyth County and the conservation subdivisions, they're talking about land of thirty-five percent in the building envelope, and then twenty-five percent being discouraged, but not necessarily restricted. Gwinnett County, their steep slopes of twenty-five percent or more apply to the limestone, limestone parkway overlay. So most likely an area of, of concern for them, as well as the steep slopes, as well as the building placement on the site. And as you'll see here, twenty-five percent is a percentage which will carry through, through a number of these ordinances, including ours. Jackson County, again, twenty-five percent and a contiguous area of five thousand square feet on those steep slope areas. City of Calhoun, very similar to Fulton County, so thirty-three to forty percent is restricted from the perspective of that you need to provide some additional site planning on those areas, and then forty percent again to the mayor and council for their variance. City of Canton gets into an ordinance very similar to ours, talks about slopes of thirty-five percent or more, and then has a graduated table, like you'll see in our ordinance, that, that defines not only the area that can be disturbed on a lot, but the lot size itself based on the average slope across that lot. Flower Branch is very similar, they limit theirs to the, to the amount of disturbed and impervious surface on the lot, but removed the requirement for the lot area. And they're talking about slopes of twenty-five percent. And they're talking about slopes of twenty-five percent. Johns Creek, thirty-three percent, and it applies to commercial developments. City of Snellville, again, twenty-five percent and five thousand contiguous square feet. And to kind of put it in perspective, we provided some information on what these slopes look like. So if you were to look at a fifteen percent slope out in the field, these are areas of Providence Park. That would give you an idea about a fifteen percent slope, a twenty percent slope, and then a twenty-five percent slope. So now our ordinance in particular. Our ordinance was based on a model ordinance that was developed by DCA for the protection of hillsides and ridgelines. We've gone through and tried to edit it to the extent that it was particular to the steep slopes. Planning Commission lacked some of the discussion and language regarding the ridgeline. So you can see in some of their additions to that, there is some discussion of the ridgelines in the modifications that they made. In our ordinance, the steep slope is set at twenty-five percent as you measure it over ten feet in height and five thousand contiguous square feet. So we tried to define an area of the slope, as well as the height of the slope, that would be covered by this ordinance. So the fact that you have a small section on your site of twenty-five percent doesn't necessarily mean that your site would be covered by this ordinance. So when you start looking at what that means within the site, let me back up one on that. If you go to the applicability, section D, number one, you can see that the highlighted language was language that was included by the planning commission for your consideration too. Two things that I would probably draw your attention to on that. This section talks about the twenty-five percent and the five thousand square feet of contiguous area. But this also has some carryover language from the model ordinances regarding the ridgeline. And so that first sentence in the highlighted section that talks about including crests for the purposes of calculation, contiguous areas shall include summits, ridgelines, which lie at higher elevations than, than these areas, even though the slopes of such crests and summits have a slope of less than twenty-five percent. So what that would mean is if you were to have a ridgeline on a property, you would have, you could have a section of your property that is the twenty-five percent and five thousand square feet. As you move up towards the ridgeline, even though that area above our protected zone is less than twenty-five percent, these regulations would continue on up to the ridgeline. So, one point for consideration there. And then further down where it talks about how you calculate the average slope on the property from property line to property line, we would probably recommend that we calculate that slope from the high point to the low point on the property, which may not necessarily be property line to property line. So the property line to property line would be good if you had a slope, a continuous slope across the entire property, but where you begin to get into ridges and valleys and you have a ver- variety of slopes across the property, it becomes a little bit more difficult administratively to manage. So we would be looking at the slope from the high point to the low point on the property to start to define these areas that may be protected.
Do you mind if I?
Oh, no, absolutely.
So that, that particular word is something that, that in your professional opinion is, is a recommendation that the planning commission made that you wouldn't necessarily agree with?
It was, it was language that was carried over from the model ordinance. And in our discussions internally, administrative, administration of that would probably be difficult. We tried to look at a number of different scenarios and lots that we have in the area to, to see how that would play out. And there were a number of them when you start looking at these ridgelines and valleys on a piece of property that
Multiple ridges and valleys across.
You end up just cutting yourself all the way across, and your average slope may not represent really what, what we're trying to protect on each individual lot. We recommended the removal of the calculation of the slope, because it really is kind of a repeat of what was provided in that first section. So in section L on page four is really kind of the meat of the ordinance. And what this talks about is a lot, whether new or an existing lot, has to contain an ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. So it has two things. The lot has to contain a building envelope with a natural grade of twenty-five percent or less. So in other words, you, you've got to have a buildable area on any given lot. It also then goes on to say that if your average slope on the lot, or the, for us, it would be that measurement of the high point to the low point on the lot. The graduated table here then goes on to say, if that slope is between twenty and twenty-nine percent, you've got a minimum lot area of one and a half acres that you have to meet. Minimum undisturbed percentage of the lot of fifty percent, and a maximum impervious surface of twenty-five percent on that lot. So the steeper the lot, the larger the lot size becomes, and the more area of the lot is protected. The exception to this would be an existing lot. So an existing lot out there that does not have a twenty-five percent buildable envelope is eligible for a building permit, but is not eligible, eligible to be subdivided.
So that existing lot could be a one acre lot or a thousand acre lot?
Right. So on the larger lots, you would expect this on the existing one acre lots. The larger lots would, most likely, you could subdivide them, because you'll have a buildable area somewhere on that. So this is going to be mostly the existing one acre lots, maybe two acre lots, that don't have a buildable area on them. But we don't want them to be unbuildable in any way. So that would be the exception to this.
By existing lot, you mean a lot that has not been developed or graded?
That's right. Could be an existing subdivision.
In, in its original topography.
Yes. So you'll have a number of lots, one acre lots, that have been subdivided, infrastructures in, but haven't been built on yet.
Right.
If, if those lots were two, three, four acres, that would have possibly been eligible for subdividing. We've got some on the backside of Lake Haven subdivision. I don't know that they don't, that they meet this criteria, but there are larger lots within an existing subdivision that could be subdivided out. That's where that component would fall. So you couldn't subdivide that lot any further, but you could build a home on.
Even if there wasn't an envelope for twenty-five percent or less?
Ordinance then goes on to talk about streets within the developments. That no new streets in excess of one hundred feet shall be constructed on lands equal to or greater than thirty-five percent. So it provides that you can do some construction on those steeper slopes, but that your roads should be on flatter areas of the property. And that's really the meat of it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matt?
Just curious, Carter, so did this come about because of the recent changes to Fulton County? Or why, how come this came about to begin with? I'm just curious, what's the history of it?
Well, I think there was always a thought that we had adopted all of the ordinances from Fulton County, including the steep slopes ordinance. As we began to have some discussions on this over the past five months with some of the other land use things that we have discussed, and land use changes, ordinances that we've changed, we realized that there really is no steep slope ordinance in our existing code. So we were bringing forward a, an ordinance to fill that gap. And we had a lot of discussion with the planning commission about the type of ordinance and the form of the ordinance, and whether or not it should be as simple as something like Fulton County, or something more like what we see in this model ordinance. And the decision was to move forward and bring forward something more like the model ordinance than something as simple as Fulton County's.
Did they have a discussion on property rights and things like that, as was brought forth tonight? I'm just curious.
I don't know that we had specific discussions on that. I think those types of discussions and those comments are always something in our mind as we move through the legal component of it. And I think they do a great job of trying to identify those portions of the ordinance that may be proposed, that we may have some problems with that. I think the fact that this comes from the model ordinances, a lot of these elements are within ordinances in other jurisdictions, I think goes to the point that it's, it's not something brand new, and it's been tested and tried in other jurisdictions, so.
So you've said we'd have legal expertise on whether or not property rights would be an issue. Ken, what are your thoughts on what we're doing here?
Oh, from a property rights standpoint, I'm very comfortable that this is not a take, not administrative taking. Yeah, I'm very comfortable.
Okay.
If at any point these ordinances, or this ordinance is is onerous in any way, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals is the, is the variance, the route.
So there is a, a method where with someone, if they feel that this isn't going to be there, that that can be made determination?
Which, which, without putting too fine a point on it, that's one of the reasons that we have variance, variances.
I'm sorry, I missed, you may have said this, but the twenty-five percent was the, was, I know it was in a lot of the ordinances you showed, but that was also in the, the Department of Community Affairs model?
They reference both twenty-five and thirty-five percent. So in the section where we look at the table, they have some discussion about a steep slope being twenty-five percent. But when you get to the section with this table, theirs is thirty-five percent.
In your professional opinion, is a twenty-five percent slope a steep slope?
In my professional opinion, that, that's a twenty-five percent slope. You know, I've seen steeper.
Yeah.
I, I think as you begin to get into the twenty-five, thirty-five, forty percent slopes, the potential for problems is much greater.
If it's not there, it's right, it's right close to it.
That's right.
I mean, I think our goal on this is to try to, you know, maintain the, those, those natural characteristics and stuff like that.
So, um, some folks say, you know, we might need to look at it at, you know, a higher percent or The lower?
Lower, flatter slope, you know, thirty, thirty, thirty-one type slope. But I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it as it is.
So, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is that this ordinance doesn't necessarily preclude you from developing on these slopes. So it's not a total prohibition on these slopes. It's basically trying to provide some protection for these slopes, and to provide, particularly in a subdivision type scenario, provide enough land in a lot to protect the slopes and get you an area to build a reasonable, reasonable home on, so. It's, it's not a, it's not a complete prohibition on construction.
And it goes in tandem with our retaining wall.
That's right.
Ordinance that was passed a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, excuse me.
That's right. So there is some provision in the ordinance that references retaining walls and references back to the ordinance that we just passed regarding the retaining walls.
How, I'm sorry. So in the section one, you know, where, where, where there was that large paragraph that the planning commission recommended adding, adding back in there, talking about the property line, the property line, and some other things. How would, how would you suggest, because, how, what would you suggest needs to be, if we were to go with the, with y'all and the staff's opinion? Does, does, and we, and say we like the part of the, the calculation for the area of the crest and this, that, and the other, where would we stop? What would we cut out of that yellow highlight area?
I, I would just say property line, from property line to property line.
Property line?
High point to low point on the property.
Okay.
I'd support that.
And then, to be honest with you, I, I think we could delete the USGS quadrangle sheets. We don't use those much anymore. Our basis is two-foot aerial photography. We've got pretty good existing aerial topo. The topo maps are just big and very generic.
So would we just say other reputable topographic maps, or all of that, basically everything from grading on pass?
Yes. We could even reference, we could come back with some language that references our two-foot aerial photography. Robin, unless there was
No, it's fine.
Some comment from
Staff making their recommendation, recommended changes to that highlighted area.
I'm okay with that.
USGS maps are pretty much updated.
Right.
Okay, any other comments?
Back on the slopes, twenty-five percent. You showed us, oh, almost a dozen different examples. There are different jurisdictions. I saw that it was leaning more towards thirty to thirty-five percent in other jurisdictions. Knowing the topography of this area and most of the Piedmont area too, I think a twenty-five percent slope is fairly general around here. And if that were the case when I built my house, I wouldn't be living there, no problem.
Well, to give you some, some idea, you know the topo in Providence Park. There weren't many places in Providence Park that were twenty-five percent. We had to struggle on the topo to find some areas to get that photo.
I, I think the issue is, if you're building a house with a basement,
Right.
and you want a daylight basement, you want there to be some slope between the front and the back. So I guess the issue is, is the twenty-five percent a good number, or is that going to be so restrictive that it, it prevents you from having the daylight basements that people like to have?
I don't think it prevents that. I'm not saying that it's a good number either. You know, I mean, you think of, you know, a twenty-five percent slope in fifty feet would be, you know, twelve and a half foot grade change. So, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a floor right there, you know, there's that. I mean, I like the part of the twenty-five percent, because it helps, I think, maintain the, the different, you know, rural view sheds that we all, you know, talk about. And it is, it is more restrictive. There's no doubt about that, but.
Well, you always have a variance that you, people connect to, so.
But I'm not saying that I also, I'm not saying that I agree that twenty-five percent is a steep slope. I mean, that's in anybody's, that can be, that, that can be, anybody could have a different opinion on that.
As far as discussion about getting variances, I think there's, there are plenty of variances that come forth to BZA, and probably a lot of them could be administratively decided. And this may be one here that might pass that muster, so. But I'd lean towards a thirty percent.
It's hard, like a lot of these things, where, where, you know, land is different to have a, a one size, a number fits everything.
Yeah.
A lot of places at twenty-five may work, and then, you know, there may be a perfect example where you could, you could put something in on a, you know, that doesn't necessarily have that envelope. It may be exactly what we're looking for, but they can't do it because it fits in that. So, I mean, with the variance of, you know, avenues, that, that gives, that gives some latitude to that, so. I'm, I'm fairly supportive of the ordinance as it's written, other than, you know, a few, a few changes with that, and see, see how it goes.
Karen?
The subdivision across from Summit Hill Elementary School that originally came in requesting some variances. Some of those lots, I'm sure the slope has got to be forty, fifty percent. Would that make those lots, if, if they had not already been zoned in a subdivision, would that make those lots unbuildable?
Well, we'd have to go back and look at that one in particular, but what you may
They're, they're steep.
Right.
Keep in mind, they raised the road, grade of their road to get, to get away from rock instead of shooting the rocks.
But that's, that would prevent somebody from doing that, is what I'm asking.
So what you could have along those sections where you've got some really steep slopes are much larger lots. So if they could find a spot So if they could find a spot, a building pad for the building envelope, that was less than 25 percent. Those steeper slopes could be incorporated into, uh, let me get back to the table. They could be incorporated into a two, two and a half, three acre lot if you're starting to talk about 30 to 40 percent grades on that.
Yeah, but doesn't this open the question in those cases there about setbacks? And irregular setbacks within the possibly irregular setbacks within a subdivision?
Well, even with, with those irregular lot sizes, your setbacks would remain the same on those lots. So if you have a 50-foot front setback in a one acre lot, you're going to have the same thing in that three acre lot. Provided you can find your building envelope, but less than 25 percent.
That's the point.
So that 25 percent still needs to meet your building setbacks along the perimeter of the property, whether it's a one acre lot or a three acre lot.
And Carter, real quick, just remind me, what was Fulton County's slope starts?
Thirty-three percent to 40 percent.
Thirty-three to 40, that was my question, so it was 33 to 40, and so that's basically where we are today.
Same as City of Calhoun. We don't have a steep slope ordinance at all. So for whatever reason, when we adopted all the full county ordinances, that piece was never adopted.
So we just, we're anything right now?
So we're nothing.
We're nothing, yeah.
So we would have been under that prior to December the first, 2006 or so, whatever it was, that, that, the four, that...
The 33 percent.
Yeah, whatever existed at that time.
So maybe, I can understand the 30 percent as well, the question is, is 30 to 25? And that would be a decision by the council, so, and, and as everything else is written, I agree with Burr, I think that that's a question we would have to decide, I guess, to vote on when it comes up, is that number, whatever that is?
I'm comfortable with the 25, since we've...
And we can, and we can do 30, 25 and, and see if we want to discuss that when it comes up before, so. Right, change it then if you want to.
Exactly.
Yeah, me too. So I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
Okay, Dawn, for item number three, agenda item number three, do we have any public comment? Okay, if you could call the item, please.
Agenda item number three is consideration of RZ 1610 to amend the Rural Milton overlay, single family uses, height, section 64, 1141C. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Proten, and the Council. I'm going to turn this over to Bob Duchemin, our city architect, to review with you. Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to be looking at adding some text for the building height. Overall, we've realized that when we did the limitation on building height, we never put a cap.
Excuse me just a second, can you guys hear in the back there? No, yeah, if you can get the mic a little bit closer, please.
How's that?
Better.
Better?
Thanks.
All right, so when we, when we developed the maximum building height, we never put a cap. So what happens is, if you look at, let's go to the proposed text. So when we look at this, the text is written as, there shall be a maximum height limit of two stories with a maximum height of 28 feet from the average finished grade to the bottom of the roof heap. And when we do that, that's from average finished grade, so as we go through this, I'll show you, you get a credit. What we'd like to add to that is a cap, a limit to how much credit you actually can get, depending on how steep the slope is, because we know we're dealing with more challengeable lot slopes. So we would like to add, notwithstanding the height limit in paragraph one above, the maximum height may be increased in an amount based on the calculation shown as examples in table one, which we'll show you. However, in no event shall the height increase be more than eight feet. Okay, so if we just had a slab house, currently the way the text is written and we've been applying it, if you have a slab house, your maximum height is 28 feet from grade to soffit. Now, with a basement, you, you have a drop in grade from the front to the back. So if the drop in grade is 10 feet, which 99 percent of them are that come in, you would get a credit of five feet, so that would give you 28 plus five, and you'd have a maximum wall height of 33 feet. And that's been working fine, most houses are falling in compliance with that without a problem. If you have 25-foot exposure, which means say one wall instead of two, it's like a side entry basement, you actually get 7.5 feet of credit, because the theory is we have less exposure, more dirt up against the house, more grade against the house, so you have less wall. And that would give you 35.5 feet, which again is pretty considerable. And the same works for if you have a basement house with 50 percent exposed and a 15-foot drop from the front of the house to the back. You would still get 30, 7.5, which would give you 35.5. So let's, let's just look at some examples.
Can I just ask a quick question? So when you're, when you're, if you can go back one slide?
Yep.
So when the maximum wall height, grade to soffit, is that talking about in the front of the house or are you saying even in the basement area, that's the...
That's any wall on the four elevation, any, any, any particular wall, the maximum height of any wall on the house would be 36 feet, the way we've calculated it, with a cap. So the illustrations I'm showing you would all be in compliance.
So if I've got, so looking at from the basement side, maximum from the, the grade up to the soffit, are those numbers that are off to the right with the adder?
The numbers off to the right would work, yeah, I'm going to show you some illustrations. So I did some sketches, just to show you that it all really works. The limitations are going to start coming into play when we have a, more like a 20-foot drop from the front to the back. So let me just, we'll run through these quick and I'll show you. So just so everybody understands it, the 50 percent exposure could mean that you have it equal on both sides, it's sloping down equally on both sides of the house. Or it could mean that you have two complete walls being exposed and two complete walls being equal to the front elevation. Or in the third illustration, it would just be a side entry, which would be a 25 percent exposure. Okay, so now let's look at some of the illustrations. Okay, so in this illustration, we have a 10-foot delta in grade from front to back. So you'd have a 10-foot basement, you could have a 10-foot first floor, a nine-foot second floor. That would give you 31 feet total, and I'm allowed up to 33. So theoretically, I could even do a 12-foot basement, 10-foot first floor and nine-foot second floor. I mean, there's so many different ways that I get these to work.
And you'd be...
So that doesn't limit anyone in this illustration, they would all work. Next illustration, next illustration shows a 15-foot delta from the front of the house to the back. In that case, we could do a two-foot six subwall, a 12-foot basement, 10-foot first floor and a nine-foot second floor. And that would still give you 35.5, and I want to put the cap at 36. So at 15 feet, it, it works, because in this illustration, you would have 35.5 feet of exposed wall in the back. Look at this illustration here. This illustration is showing a 20-foot delta from the front of the house to the back. And you have 50 percent exposure. My maximum credit here would be an eight-foot, I'm going to limit it instead of 10, right? Because it's 20 feet, you have 50 percent, so theoretically that's half, but I want to limit it to eight at this point. So that would give you, you'd end up with a, say, a retaining wall with a three-foot exposed subwall, 12-foot basement, 10-foot first floor, nine-foot second floor, as an example. So I'm trying to limit when it gets to 20-foot delta. So right now, as the current law exists, I don't have any cap. So the steeper the grade, the more credit I'm giving.
This kind of goes hand in hand with what we just talked about. Some of this may not, may not ever come into play if, when the steep slope ordinance, whatever the grade is passed.
But with the retaining wall that was passed, what's happening is, on these really steep slopes, people are saying, well, I'll just maximize and use the house as a retaining wall instead of limiting the, with the limitations on the retaining wall. So then the house walls are getting very large, so none of them have actually come in front of us yet. But I wanted to put a max in there just in case so that they don't start coming in and I end up with 40-foot walls in the back of a residence. It's just, 36 feet would be equivalent to three 12-foot floors. And I really felt that that's visually the most you could do to make it look residential. Once you start going with 40, 45-foot walls in the back of a house, it doesn't look residential anymore. Doesn't have the appearance. So other tricks that we've been playing and people have liked is not to make it look like one solid wall, what you could do is you could actually have an eight-foot subwall in this illustration with a 20-foot delta in grade, an eight-foot subwall, a 12-foot basement height, a 10-foot first floor, but then dormer the second floor. And it would work, because this would give you 32 feet of wall and you're allowed to 36. So what it does is, all I'm doing is limiting how high the straight wall can be, because we don't want to have visually a wall that's greater than 36 feet in height. So that would be an example of a lot, what a lot of people take and actually works.
Where this would, would be applicable under the steep slopes are those lots that are existing that wouldn't necessarily, the steep slopes ordinance wouldn't apply to.
Okay.
So the next one's another architectural trick that we've been doing to make things comply. I guess you could actually have a nine-foot ceiling and then do it internally, say, on the second floor and then do it, a tray ceiling, giving you the 10-foot internal, say, in a bedroom, which is very common on the second floor. So there's so many different ways that we've been applying this and getting them all to work. But the key is, is that we never put in a maximum. So on the really, really steep ones, and there were some lots coming in with 90 feet of grade delta from the front to the back. And like similar to the ones that Providence is working on across from Summit. And with a 90-foot delta, what we'd end up having to do there without, without a cap, they could just come in and build a wall 40, 45 feet tall. With the cap, what I'd end up doing is getting them to make the delta less so that it would be a narrower, not as deep, house. Because the deeper you go, the more delta you have. So there's different ways that we can get them all to work, but we wouldn't be driving down and looking at a 40-foot wall facing a street. The maximum, I think, that would be acceptable is the 36. And I don't think we'd preclude anybody from building or not being able to build and not being able to work with it. Even Providence Group that was doing that particular application was willing to do the illustration I showed you with the dormers so that it looks as if it's really two stories from the rear and then you have that, you know, individual dormers. Instead of having like a full three or four story, you could have a full eight-foot subwall without this limitation, which would be tremendous. And I don't think is the intent of the code, so. That's the presentation.
Karen?
If you have any questions.
And I'm assuming, like other things, there would be a appeal to the BZA if somebody had an extenuating circumstances that they needed 37 rather than 38 feet, rather than 36 feet?
Yes.
Okay. As long as there's an appeal to it, I think this is, this is fine.
Most of them, we work with the applicants and we come up with solutions. And in almost every case, we've, in every case, we have had no variances on height because we've always worked out the solutions. But with these very, very steep slopes coming in and the retaining wall ordinance coming into play, without a cap, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that people are just going to want to use the house wall as their retaining wall and maximize it as much as they can. And that's not the intent of keeping it looking residential and in context with the rest of the community.
Bill?
So really just to restate the point, if I'm correct, this governs the depth of a house?
The depth of the house would be one consideration, Bill, that would assist people in meeting the code. So instead of building very narrow, deep houses on steep slopes, they'd be better to build wide, shallow houses.
Right.
And it really does, I mean, when we work with the applicants and show them the creativity of how we really can mold these buildings and volumes and shapes to really make them, it, it really is an advantage to the homeowner who's about to purchase it because they don't really want to live on a house that has a 30-foot delta on the side. I mean, it's almost non-walkable. You, you need steps, you really can't get to the back of your house. So it's, there's a lot of different activities, which is nice. We give a lot of flexibility, there's not one size fits all here, and it's been working very nicely. It's just with the retaining wall ordinance, I could see people coming back now saying, geez, let me maximize the house with the subwall because I'm limited to six feet on a retaining wall. So we really don't want to see that, especially from roadways.
So that's really what you're, what this is getting at, is not, not have super high retaining walls and total, total volume, because we're going to have a total of three stories for residential, including the basement if it's a walkout basement.
That's correct.
Anybody else?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Okay, Dawn, do we have any public comments on item number four?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, if you could read some of the items, please.
Agenda item number four is consideration of RZ 1611 to amend the Crab Apple Form Base Code as it relates to building units allowed for parking structures, article 19 of the zoning ordinance. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proten. Within the Crab Apple Form Base Code, when a parking structure is constructed, the ordinance allows for a density bonus. And that bonus is comprised of two building units per one parking space within the parking structure. One building unit equals either one residential unit, no matter what the size, or 2250 square feet of non-residential space. However, as the ordinance currently reads, there is no maximum cap on the number of density bonus units one can utilize. And staff has encountered developers wanting to take advantage of what we've established to be essentially a loophole here. And in order to eliminate unappealing high-density development that does not meet the vision for the Crab Apple area, staff has proposed a density cap. And this cap would be the same as we have indicated for the transfer of development rights, as shown in table 10 of the Crab Apple Form Base Code. And for instance, in the T5 zone, the allowed density is nine units per acre. And the density allowed with the use of TDR credits is 14 units per acre. We propose that should this text amendment be approved, that density bonuses, when a parking structure is included, be capped at this 14-unit-per-acre density limit. So we, we want to establish a density limit and we felt since the 14 units for the T5, and it certainly, it changes depending on which T-zone it is, but it's been vetted, we've, we've capped it, we've established that density cap for TDR credits and we felt that was an appropriate cap to use. And we recommend that this cap be utilized as well for parking spaces within underground parking structures, otherwise there is no cap. Otherwise, there's no cap at all and sky's the limit. And we could end up with a very, very dense type of development that I think would be overwhelming the site.
Matt?
Parking structure, I'm trying to picture it in my mind. Are you talking to parking deck or what is?
Or it could be underground. It could be under the building.
Okay.
As long as it's public and it's not reserved for a loft unit above, for instance. But if it were a public space, where, for each parking space, the way the code is written, you get two units, whether it's housing units or each unit is twenty-two-fifty square feet of retail, commercial space. So you're talking about, for each parking space, you could have forty-five hundred square feet of commercial retail additional space and with no cap on that.
Above and beyond will be declared with the Form-Based Code.
Well, it, it, it's whatever, whatever you can fit on the site. And so right now, we say by right, in a T-five, for instance, I'm using T-five, you get nine. But with a TDR, you can get up to fourteen. So we thought we had established a density limit using the TDR. We'd vetted that and that that would be a good number to use and relate it as well to density limits for parking spaces within parking structures.
So we don't have a parking structure built in Crabapple? Yeah, but people are inquiring about this to take advantage of this, will?
Right. And, and we, we do have a development coming in, for instance, on Mayfield Road and they're using underground parking.
Okay.
But there's just no cap and, and we, we thought that it needed to be corrected.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Good, thanks. Dawn, our last item, item number five, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Can you call that person?
Stephanie Butler.
I made it in the nick of time.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Butler, seven-seventy Stratford Drive in Milton. I am the president of the North Atlanta Football League. With regard to field space at Bell Memorial Park, we respectfully request use of turf fields when they're not being used by other sports whenever the fields are open. This is something that I spoke about at the last city council meeting in December. So we have, oh, we have just about four hundred kids in our program. A hundred ninety-seven of them are City of Milton residents. So that's what we're requesting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if the city clerk could sign on the item?
Agenda item number five is discussion regarding the Open Parks Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Milton and the City of Alpharetta and an overview of the City of Milton field use and facility rental policies. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening. Bringing up the presentation now. Again, I was asked to discuss a couple of issues, again, how the MOU is working, how it's gone, as well as our facility use and rental policies. Very brief overview, MOU was created in fall of 2012. The concept was to provide an opportunity for citizens of both cities to be able to participate in activities in the other, opposite city without having to pay an out-of-city fee. And part of that agreement was that there would be an annual evaluation of the fees that each city is not receiving from the out-of-city resident. And then also a calculation of an appropriate payment to the city that has, did not receive as much money as the other. Which is, every year it has been Alpharetta receiving a check from Milton. Okay? Due to the differences, disparities in the programming. So how has this program worked so far? Okay, how has it gone? So I put together a simple graph to show you the five years we've been in existence. The blue lines on each year represent the number, total number of Alpharetta residents participating in programming in Milton. The orange lines represent Alpharetta, excuse me, Milton residents participating in Alpharetta. I would like to point out that in 2014, there was a more stringent calculation of the senior citizens participating in activities at the Adult Activity Center. And that calculation results in a much larger jump as this was agreed to, how we were measuring, how we were calculating it. Both cities came together and say, this is an equitable way to count these participation. So what you see here is the total numbers. Now, what has this program cost the city?
Jim, go on that real quick. The, like, 2016, for example, the one thousand four hundred, or fourteen thousand eighty-five Milton residents participating in Alpharetta programs, that could be a one child participating in three Alpharetta sports during the course of one year. Is that right?
Whether it's a child or an adult, we, you know, if a program is established,
Right.
For example, if it's a person playing baseball. Baseball is a fall and a spring sport.
Right.
All right? Person signs, same person signs up for both seasons, that's two.
Twice, exactly, exactly.
Same thing with the senior programming. The senior programming, if they have a ten-week activity, ten-week program, and the same person signs up for the subsequent one, subsequent one, you, that same person is counted multiple times because it's registrations to a program is what we're calculating. Each of which would then have derived a non-resident fee if this MOU didn't exist.
And you have a breakdown of how many people are participating in the different programs, I'm sure, right?
Stay tuned.
There we go. Exactly.
Do you, do you have part of this graph, do you have the number of residents participating in the Alpharetta program?
That's the blue, the two-seventy-two.
No, in their own, no, blues, they're participating in the Milton program. Orange is Milton residents participating in Alpharetta.
But you're looking at Alpharetta residents participating in the Alpharetta program.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I have a hard time believing that Alpharetta's got, I mean, if we got ten thousand two hundred and seventy-two resident programs participating in Alpharetta senior programs, I mean, how many senior programs do they have going on at a time?
They have quite a few. They have quite a few programs.
And that's at the, at North Park.
That's at Alfred Activity North Park.
They get a lot of.
That includes various day trips they take them on, which would be an individual registration, you know.
And, and we're paying not just a, the normal out-of-city fee for them, we're paying the out-of-city fee plus a multiplier?
Well, actually, what was done at the start of the agreement is it was recognized that the Adult Activity Center was a different animal compared to all the other registrations. And so in the initial calculation of participation, the senior citizens are left out of that calculation, the adult activity at, at the center. And then what happens is there is a flat fee that is added at the end to represent the costs that Alfred is paying to run that program. It was recognized five years ago that if we actually compared the actual numbers of adult senior citizen program participants, this would have been priced completely out of the water and unfeasible to the city. So the senior citizen programming, as you'll see, as I get into the next couple of slides, how the numbers actually come out. If you, if it'd be okay with you, can hold a minute, let me get to it. And if I haven't answered your question, I'll be happy to try it again. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Here's the program costs. As you may recall, I said in 2014, we did a more stringent calculation of the actual participation of senior citizens. And that number, that raw number of participants went up drastically. But the payment did not go up drastically because the senior citizens are calculated as a flat fee. In 2015, the highest number that, of the differential, that was the year that Bell Memorial Park was closed and you had a high number of Milton participants going over to Alpharetta for baseball. Okay? Taking us to the next slide. I wanted to give you an idea. These are the top ten categories of programming that people are using in Alpharetta. And again, ten thousand of that represents programs of the senior citizens. But we only play, we only pay a flat fee of fifty-five thousand dollars. That's not multiplied by one point five. It's fifty-five thousand dollars, which was a number initially set at forty thousand, two, three years ago was negotiated to fifty-five and has stayed at fifty-five since. Yes, sir.
So the fifty-five thousand out of that three hundred-some-thousand dollars, the rest of it is comprised of the different youth activities?
Youth and adult activities, yes, sir. Okay, and so to put it in perspective, instructional programming, things such as aerobics, art classes for youth and adults, babysitting certification courses, dance, gymnastics, karate, sport hikes, tree climbing, volleyball, yeah, these are the type of programs that are being offered at the community centers at Alpharetta, both the Alpharetta Community Center, the Will's Park Community Center, and the Crabapple Community Center. So that's instructional programming, summer camps. Youth baseball is a program that has, is a program that we offer baseball, a similar program as well as Alpharetta does.
And that shows that three hundred and one Milton residents are partaking in Alpharetta baseball program?
That is correct. That is correct. Aquatics, again, we don't have a pool. Youth softball, we do not have a youth softball program. Adult athletics refers to adult softball and adult basketball. Youth football, the number I'm presenting here is the number given to me by Alpharetta, one eighty-seven. I know our guest earlier spoke, there was a little bit different, ten or twelve people different, but I'm, I'm working off the data that we had from Alpharetta, that we calculated. Youth soccer and special events. Now, that's not all of it, but I just wanted to present the top ten. Where is this participation going? And if you take the number, whoops, what did you wrong there?
You lost your presentation.
Nope, doing it wrong again. Nope, get it there. I want to go backwards. Okay? All right. So if you take that number there, the three hundred and sixty-two thousand, fifty-five of that was the senior citizen program. The remaining three hundred and seven is a result of the truing up of the fees as well as the extra fifty percent that is on top of that to represent the payment, the acknowledgement of the capital investment that we pay to Alpharetta.
That's their impact fee.
And Jim, the, the, went from forty thousand to fifty-five thousand, it was forty thousand in 2014?
I apologize, sir, I can't hear you.
When did the seniors go from forty to fifty-five? What year? Was it, there, there was a flat?
Oh, oh, in twenty, twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, so, so obviously if the, so that added additional fifteen thousand. So what I'm looking at is I'm seeing a trend. Obviously, it jumped up at Bell Memorial, but the trend is coming back down.
Right.
Except for another fifteen thousand that we negotiated
Right.
with Alpharetta, so that, you know, technically, it, it looks like that three twenty-six, three thirty-five or so is roughly where we might level off if things, as they continue to go.
The, there's no question, the baseball program, the Hopewell Baseball Program here at Bell Park took a large hit. There was a number of people who went over to AYBA to play baseball and they stayed. At three hundred and one participants last year, that's the highest number, taking away year 2015. But in all the years previous, that's the highest number. So there were Milton residents who went over there, decided they liked it there, and they've stayed. And that's their decision. But Hopewell Baseball is working very hard. Their numbers are up. They're continuing to grow. And I think that number will level out. And I had made a projection in 2014, I did an executive study on this program and I predicted that this would probably continue to cost us in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year unless something changed in the program, in the, the deal. Yes, sir.
What's the, well, say if we weren't, if we were not paying for this as a city, what is the, the out-of-city fee that Alpharetta normally charges? What's the up-charge on each of the programs?
I actually prepared a slide for you. It's not on your packet, but if it's okay, I'll, I'll kind of bounce out of order here and answer that question, which, is that all right?
Sure.
Sure.
Now I've turned it off. Okay. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Nope, keep going, keep going. There we go. Okay. On this slide here, I took a sample calculation. It's fairly close. If you look at the total bottom line number, it's fairly close to what we're doing. Obviously, I rounded the numbers for the purpose of this example. But it is not uncommon for the fees collected by Alpharetta to be in the two hundred and change number. Part of that is because of the sheer number of people in Milton participating in Alpharetta. The other part, if you notice, the out-of-city fee for Alpharetta is seventy-five percent, while ours is fifty percent. So there's a disparity there. But when you then take what we have, subtract the smaller number from the larger number, that gives you your net difference between the two cities. From there came the capital investment multiplier that was agreed to five years ago of point five. That adds roughly another hundred thousand. There you see the flat fee for the Adult Activity Center. And this, and in this example, you're looking at three hundred and fifty-five. And again, the payment this year was three sixty-two and change. So that's a rough approximation of generally how it works.
So what we're covering then is the fees that ought to, I guess, the net between the two cities, the seventy-five and the fifty on ours, we're paying the net of the fees to them plus fifty percent additional for the capital investment multiplier.
For the fact that Alpharetta has invested a large amount of capital dollars in creating all these facilities that allows us opportunities for these programs and participation. There, there was an effort last year
No.
to try and, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that multiplier was an issue. We tried to negotiate that down and with City of Alpharetta. And, you know, I mean, obviously, we had a choice to make as far as whether we would eliminate the out-of-resident fees or not. And they wouldn't budge when I talked to them, so that was kind of, and nor, nor did they need to. You know, really, they were enjoying taking our checks.
And I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this or not, and I think it's been brought up here, maybe, maybe back here and before, but we as a city just couldn't reimburse our, our residents, the out-of-city fees and cut our bottom line by a hundred thousand dollars.
There was a point in time prior to Steve's arrival that Chris Lagerblum and I sat down and talked about it, about a voucher-type program. And we didn't see a way we could do that appropriately because it, it just wasn't going to work. Ken, can you speak on that?
Yeah, I think that, I'm not sure how we could do that.
I mean, I, I, I know it sounds sticky and everything, but it sure sounds like a reasonable.
It seems kind of bad that we're using taxpayers' money for an additional fifty percent premium for our residents, for us to pay for our residents to play on their field. Yeah.
So you have a huge administrative fee, it seems like.
I mean, the, the out-of-city fees should cover the capital investment and that's why you're paying the out-of-city fees.
Right.
So I'm not sure why we have a multiplier of fifty percent.
Because if we didn't, if we weren't involved with this agreement, the real net cost to our residents would be, for them to participate in those plans, would be the fees, the additional seventy-five percent. So we're paying them plus we're paying fifty percent on that seventy-five percent.
Correct.
Right.
It's a steep administrative fee.
I'm sorry, sir?
I said that's, it seems like a steep administrative fee.
Well, it's our, it's their impact fee. That's basically what it is.
Right.
But, but if we didn't have this agreement, our residents could still go and use their facilities and pay the same fee that we're paying to true up without paying the additional.
That is correct. If the, if the agreement did not exist, then all people who, Milton residents who choose to participate in programming in Alpharetta would pay the registration fee and then they would pay a seventy-five percent premium on top of that. Now, I do want to be clear in fairness to both parties. The City of Milton- Uh, the city of Milton, with a policy decision that helped us with, we cap it at ninety dollars, and Alpharetta caps their maximum amount of city fee at a hundred and twelve fifty. So, you know, if you had a, you know, a program that's four hundred dollars, uh, in Alpharetta, they would not charge an additional three hundred, they would charge four hundred and cap it at a hundred and twelve fifty.
Would they do the same thing if we didn't have this agreement?
Oh, no, that's their own policy, that's, that was not something done as part of this agreement. That's just their separate policy.
So they're tracking, we're truly tracking the out of, the out of, the Milton residents that are going in their program, they know what that number is.
Yes. We were, I'm sorry.
So we're paying what they would, what our residents would have normal pa, normally paid, plus we're paying that additional fifty percent on that figure.
In their calculations to us, uh, payments that would be over a hundred and twelve fifty, in their calculation, they put it at a hundred and twelve fifty, they don't double dip us that way.
But that's spread out instead of the thousand families just using that number in Milton that might be going to, to Alpharetta, that cost is spread out over the three thousand families that, that live in Milton.
Correct.
So this goes to the next point I'm sure we're gonna talk about, and what Stephanie had brought up. You know, 'cause I know Alpharetta would love to try to use some of our fields, 'cause they are out of field space in cer, certain situations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and yet, you know, if we're paying a multiplier for them to use our field space, that kind of defeats the purpose. Um, so I'm sure we're gonna go into the MOU agreement next on rental policy and stuff like that.
If, if you're okay with this part, I'll move on to the field rental policies?
Yeah.
I think we understand.
Yeah. Alright.
Where are you going back?
Backwards, keep going, keep going, keep going. Here we go, oop. Here we go, thank you. Alright, so, this is directly from a city policy that's already been, uh, vetted and approved by the council. But, uh, the, whenever we are selecting who we're giving field use to, first and foremost, to anything run directly by the city of Milton. Second is to any of our authorized program partners. Next would be to any city of Milton resident who wishes to rent space, and under the MOU, that would include an Alpharetta resident. And then next would be a non-resident request, uh, for rental, and then just the field's open, go use it. So that's how we allocate fields and facilities. This next slide, I simply cut and pasted from the policy that was approved by council late last year. Uh, talks about what our rental policy is. You may recall, there was a, a desire by council for the city of Milton to allow a program that competes with something that we already offer to have, uh, an opportunity to rent up to three times in a calendar year, no more than twice in a, a calendar quarter. Okay? So that's, that's the policy that was previously approved by this council. So this took us to the next step with regard to the request by, uh, North, uh, Atlanta Football League. Alright, our policy says, a request related to a program or athletic sport already offered by the Milton Parks and Recreation Department or its partners will be permitted a maximum of three rental periods in a calendar year. So this brought to me a key question. What do other agencies do when they are, receive a request for rental for a program that they are already providing directly or through program partners? What we did is we did a survey at random of twelve different agencies. North Georgia, Central Georgia, South Georgia, cities, counties, metro areas, we picked them at random. Here's what they told us. It should be noted that Alpharetta Recreation Parks has a policy of no rental. And in fact, last year, despite the fact that we have an MOU, last year when we had a problem, uh, for a brief period of time with our basketball program, and we asked to rent some space from Alpharetta so we can keep that program contiguous, we were denied.
Did they have available space?
They had available space.
Jeez.
Okay.
Okay. Dalton Parks and Recreation did have special considerations that they would permit it. It had to be at a time that the program, uh, time of the year that the pro, not the time of day, but the time of the year that the program offered by Dalton was not active. So for example, if it was a traditionally fall sport, they would permit it in spring. Okay? And that's, that's the whole presentation, folks.
Do we know what our field utilization is? I, I'm sure you've, you've got that as far as availability and, 'cause we've heard some people come forward and say, hey, we drive by and there's nobody there. What, what's the option to actually utilize that or have other groups use that?
There is no question that the Milton Steelers program, the size of program, did allow for dead spaces that those programs, other, other entities could use it. Uh, with the baseball fields, what we have done is we've done a lot of work with the local Atlanta Cricket League, and so we are providing programming through rental, uh, to, on baseball fields. So we're still getting utilization, we're still getting citizens using it. Uh, but we're not creating something that competes directly with any programming that we are offering. But it is an accurate statement to say that there were times that folks drove by and the field allocated for football, uh, was dark.
With the request that you've received, uh, from, uh, North Atlanta Football League, is there any, what, what's the request as far as compensation or utilization? I mean, are they asking for just use of the, the field?
I, I have not received a direct request, however, obviously they've come to you, and I've spoken briefly with Ms. Butler, um, several months ago. But when it comes down to the use of the fields by a competing program, I go back to the policy that the council has approved.
Right.
Bert? Well, I understand, Jim, that we, that we have approved the policy that you're, that you're going back for, and that's, that's what your job is, is to go to, to enforce that policy. So I think we all understand that. Sometimes when we, we do enforce, uh, put a policy in place, it, it may or may not pan out that that was the right policy, and I'm not saying this, this has or hasn't. I would like to utilize, as any, any business would, their assets a hundred percent of the time, um, or as, as much as you can, so, um, and maybe there are other ways around it too, where the groups can, can work together in some, some other things, and, and they can complement each other perhaps and compete. But, um, maybe it's something we need to, to look at, maybe it's not. You know, I don't know what, what, what the rest of us think, but maybe we need to revisit that policy, um, a bit, and it might not necessarily change a no to a yes, but maybe there's some special considerations, um, that we could have. Maybe they're not, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't administer it, I don't have to live with it every day and deal with it every day. Um, but, um, but you know, we've, we've, uh, we've tweaked other policies and, and different things in the past. Again, not saying we need to on this, but I do think globally, we really need to do some soul-searching on the, the whole MOU, um, deal. That's, that's probably for another evening, yeah.
Yeah, and that's my thought in this is, I mean, obviously the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we're supposed to have a scheduled meeting tomorrow, I think, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, so, um, if you're looking for direction on that, the party that's not in the room, we have, is the city of Alpharetta, right now. And we can talk all day long about this stuff, but right now, the agreement is, is that we're writing a check to the city of Alpharetta, um, for Milton residents that aren't choosing to participate in Milton programs. Um, the question that I think we should give to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is first discuss the feasibility of sharing field space with Alpharetta for the negotiation of eliminating the multiplier. You know, that's something that we would have to think about. If that's the first route that the Parks and Rec Board decides they want to go. If they do not, then we have to discuss the prospect of, you know, the
Fees.
feasibility of the MOU in itself. And, um, I think giving direction to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, that's how we should approach it. If the Parks and Rec Advisory Board decides item one of, um, field space shareage with Alpharetta for a negotiated reduced fee of that multiplier. Um, you know, there's obviously administration, logistical, things that we'd have to make sure it can be done before anything would be done, and obviously the Parks and Rec Advisory Board would make that determination. Um, but, you know, that's, that's something that we need to, we'd have to sit down in another boardroom meeting with everybody and all the players at play, and, and have that discussion if that's a route we decide we want to go. Um, so, you know, there's obviously that challenge there, but, you know, ultimately, we have programs in place. You know, we have a football program in place because of marketing for the city of Milton, and baseball for the marketing for the city of Milton too, and there's a reason why we made those decisions. Um, and that's why they exist. You know, it's a Milton businessman and a Milton taxpayer, first shot in a Milton field, and that's why we made that decision at that point in time. Um, but Alpharetta, doing what they're doing, I don't have, I don't, I'm not surprised about what they're doing. I just think that we need to decide if we want to have shared field space or not. Let the Parks and Rec Advisory Board say if we decide to do that, what would we negotiate in order to reduce that fee? And, um, you know, and that's the case, and if not, then we need to look at the prospect of, you know, maybe changing or eliminating the MOU altogether.
So that I am clear on the guidance, on the discussion for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board,
Mm-hmm.
what is that first item you would like us to take under review?
Discuss the feasibility of shared field space with Alpharetta for a negotiation potentially of eliminating the multiplier that we pay them. I'm not gonna pay Alpharetta a multiplier for their program to be on our fields. It's just that simple.
I, I would, if I may, I'd like to suggest we would also have to consider in that discussion the response from our program partners who partner with us in an effort to grow these programs.
Yes.
And whether we're talking football, Girls across, Boys across, baseball, basketball. We have organizations, some not-for-profit,
Sure.
some parent volunteer groups who put in thousands and thousands of hours with the expectation that the city is not going to bring another program in to directly compete with them.
And, well, it goes both ways. It's like the example that you just cited with the basketball. We would go there too, if there was additional space. That would be, the shared field space is just, just that. It's available space, and again, that is a question of whether or not that negotiation could ever happen. If the Parks and Rec Advisory Board decides it's not, I'm okay with that. I want to make sure that they discuss that, look at it, all options. I don't like that our basketball program is refused by Alpharetta when they have open space and we ask to rent it. Maybe we pay a fee for that or whatever, but that's, you know, those are the discussions that we need to have.
It, it's simply the general practice within the industry.
We do the same.
Yeah.
I mean, so I mean, I mean...
Actually, actually, we have the most liberal, uh, rental policy here.
We allow them up to three times.
Will that, a competing program come in three times in a year? No, and I, as you can see, I was not able to come up with an agency to do that.
Right.
Karen?
I'm still fundamentally having a, an issues whether or not it is in the best interest of the majority of Milton residents for us to spend taxpayer dollars on a multiplier. I'm just having a real fundamental issue on, on, you know, yes, it does benefit the people that participate in those programs, but it, if you look at the percentage of people participating in the programs, it's not a large percentage of the total Milton residents. So I'm having a tough time telling somebody that I'm spending their tax dollars for somebody else to participate in a program in another city, um, and if, if that's really fair use of it.
Elliot?
Maybe to the same point. Tell me if I'm missing something here. So we have a bunch of Milton residents participating in Alpharetta programs by their choice only, when they could be participating in a similar program in Milton.
In two of the top ten cases, okay? If you look at it, uh, in all these other cases, for example, the senior programming, this is not comparable to the programming we offer at the Thomas S. Byrd House.
Right.
That's comparable to the North Fulton Senior Services programming offered at the Crab Apple Community Center. Alright? Those are comparable programs, both supported by North Fulton Senior Services. The Adult Activity Center at North Park
Right.
is where those senior programming numbers are generated from.
Correct.
But for all those other programs, in only two cases, does the city of Milton offer a similar program? So all those others are gaps being filled by the fact that we don't have the resources or facilities to provide those services.
Okay. Well, if that's a personal choice for a Milton resident to incur additional cost to go elsewhere, I don't see the, uh, I don't see the sense in doing something like that. I'm, I'm not sure how much that represents. Does it represent what? And those are, uh, participants at seventy-three and a hundred and eighty-five, I guess.
No, it's one eighty-seven and three oh-one, so it's roughly five hundred participants.
Just those two that we offer.
Blue ones we don't offer.
Okay.
So, go ahead, you finish.
So it may be a small part of the whole thing, but in addition to, uh, Karen's point, when you have a choice like that, and you choose to select, uh, a program that's additional cost to the city when it's being provided here, uh, I have a problem with that.
Go ahead, man.
The question, uh, a great example. I think the question is, is we'd have to ask, um, if we do not offer a program, for example, like, um, softball.
I'll give you an example, softball.
Yeah, softball, exactly. We don't out, we don't offer softball in the city of Milton. Um, therefore, our residents, if they are softball players, would have to pay the additional seventy-five percent fee because we just choose not to offer it. We would make that up if we decided to build softball fields, but there's a cost to that, of course.
I paid that fee for twelve years.
You know how that goes, exactly, so...
That's okay, I paid it twelve years, so, twice a year.
So that, that's the question we would just have to ask, and that's, that is really the question of the whole validity of the MOU. We did the MOU at a time when we really had no fields. And, uh, and now that we do...
But I would like to see this, this instructional programming, which is the second largest category, I'd like to see us begin to be able to provide some of those for our residents so that we're not having, we're not having to rely on Alpharetta for some, some of that, so that we're not having to...
Can we do that at Providence Park?
I need a community center. And I'd love to get into that discussion with you at a whole set of times.
Well, you could buy, you could build a pretty nice community center with what we're paying Alpharetta for about three years, you know.
I, I've just done a very quick calculation here, based off of the numbers I have from Alpharetta in their report. Uh, the raw number, non-resident fee for baseball, approximately thirty-three thousand dollars. Again, I'm, I'm making it up as I'm going along here. The other one is approximately twenty-two thousand dollars, for football, is approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's, uh, represents fifty-five thousand dollars. So multiplied by another fifty percent, we're somewhere around seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars for, uh, football and baseball.
I think we need to hurry and build a community center at Providence Park to, uh, take care of the instructional programs at least.
Steve, did you hear that? Did you hear that, Steve? Steve?
Yeah. I mean, you know, like I said, you could build a pretty nice community center with three or four years' worth of, uh, out-of-resident fees.
I think that's, that's a good point. Rather than, uh, continue to jock you around back and forth with this MOU, uh, let's look at a long-term solution on how we can get out of this additional expense. Of course, it's gonna cost us to build something, but I think in the, in the long term, we, we could make, make it pay for itself.
And I understand initially when we did this, it, it really was to try to provide our residents, because we didn't have, we're now a city, we have, we don't have the facilities, we're planning to build the facilities in the future. Here's an opportunity to not have them pay the additional fee, but we're offering that, in essence, we're paying the additional fee by allowing them to, to actually participate.
Plus fifty percent.
Well, the fifty percent is the thing, I guess I'm still having a hard time. I guess I, I'd ask, as we're looking at field utilization, that's just my view, field utilization for, for programs that compete with ours, if we're looking at that, you guys have to look at all the impacts, potentially, how that plays out, you're closer to that than us. But I just have a cons, I guess, a concern that we're paying that, that additional fifty percent when we're already paying what, what the resident would pay in out-of, out-of fees. To me, that seems like the fair thing, 'cause we're, they'd pay that whether or not we did it, if they want to participate in the program. If they want to participate in the program, why are we paying an additional fifty percent on top of that? That, that's the part, I guess, I'm.
That was negotiated five years ago.
Right. So I'd say.
You know, that was Chris, Matt, Mark Reed, myself, and Bob Regus, Mike Perry, Jim Gilvin, and Ben Easterling.
Do they pay fifty percent premium to us?
We never met, they would if our numbers were superseded theirs.
If the numbers were flipped, actually, the, actually, the agreement doesn't state that. The agreement doesn't state that.
You do the true-up on the actual fees, and then we pay whatever we owe above that is what we pay in fifty percent additional to it. I just ask, and I don't know if the rest of the council feels that way, is just when you're looking at this, again, look hard at that and talking about fairness, because again, it's taxpayer money that we're spending. And the, and the question is, is that a good use of taxpayer funds? I, I still understand they're providing additional programs, so I understand that that's a benefit to our, our residents. I just have a hard time with the fifty percent multiplier on top of that. Because we're making them whole, we're making them whole on their out-of, out-of-city fees, but we're also paying, just for the administrative portion, we're paying another fifty percent on top of that. That's the part I have a hard time understanding why I would do that.
As Mr. Coons can attest, we did attempt that last year, and we were rebuffed. I would, you know, in the, discussing the issue of fairness, I, I'm quite sure the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which is strongly committed to the program partners we have, they would also be discussing the issue of fairness of bringing in competing programs to, I mean, why would a person join Milton Steelers? If they're a Milton resident, they can sign up for NAFL and then be at Bell Park, you know? So, and, and why would Milton Steelers want to continue with us if we're bringing them in? So it's a bigger question that has to be looked at.
That, and I guess I under, I understand that portion, 'cause I, I kind of put that off as a side. That's a different thing we have to consider, but when you look at the overall program and the fee, the fee reconciliation, that's where I think, I, I think we just need to go back and try to revisit that. And then you, you can talk about the other piece about field utilization impact to programs. That, that's a separate.
But they're all intertwined.
Yeah, they are.
They're all intertwined. And, and this is why I put the presentation together here, because all three issues are tied together.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, hopefully with the, with the field use issue that's, that's sort of at hand, that's burned us on, maybe, maybe the groups can work together and come up with something where they can complement each other and.
I, I, I would like to go on record with something that I, I've reasonably believed that there may have been some quiet discussions between both NAFL and Milton Steelers. And while I'm not directly participating in it, I'm encouraging it, because I genuinely believe that if these two programs could come together and find a solution that works for them, which means it's working for the citizens they're serving, I believe strongly that if we brought a solution that they're in agreement to, and brought it to this council, I would, I'm confident that this council would say, let's go for it, and I could see Alpharetta doing the same.
That would make sense.
Yeah, and I think we, we, we attempted something like that at the very beginning, but there's no way it was gonna happen that first pass.
There was no way then.
Yeah.
Okay? But the one thing that stays the same is change. There's different leadership now with the NAFL. I, I, you know, I think, you know, perhaps the winds of change are blowing. I can't say that with certainty. I'm not on either board. All I hear is just what I hear. But I, you know, that could go a long way to solving a lot of issues.
It sounds like you're, you'll look at that, you guys will look at it from Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec would certainly would.
Sounds like y'all gonna have a fun meeting tomorrow.
You're all welcome. Eleven thirty.
Yeah, I would, I would say anything, you know, obviously, the main important thing we want is for as many kids learning life lessons through athletics as, as possible. And, you know, we have a lot of these intertwining issues with regards to field space and money and, and territorialism and, and all of this sort of thing, which is very common in sports. But if the two parties on those programs, you know, if they choose to work together and want to work together to achieve an objective, I'm all for innovation about what they can come up with. But I think it's conducive on them to see if they can come up with something. That'd be a good thing.
Before I close, what I'd like to do is change gears a little.
Offer a prayer? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to pass out a picture I took today about four hours ago, well, five. This is at the Broadway Pavilion. We've just finished yesterday building it. We still have landscaping to do around it. But not only is it beautiful, but I think what you'll see is the most important thing. Smiles on faces, kids playing on it. So I'd like to just pass this down.
But are we charging Alpharetta residents a multiplier?
One for y'all, I guess, and this one, two for y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. Very nice. A delightful alligator.
Alligator is a balance beam for the two-to-five-year-olds. We have components here for two-to-five-year-old children and components for children five to twelve.
Does it, does it move?
The balance beam alligator does not move. It's for two-to-five children, stand up and, you know, get the hang of walking on a balance beam.
Oh, that's cute.
One of the gates.
What an alligator, that was a monster.
That's still in process. That's still coming. Like I said, we, we, when I say we just got it, we haven't finished all the work going on.
But that's part of this, this, this deal.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Okay. Folks, before I close, do you have any other questions for me? I'd like to thank you all for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Jim. Steve, anything else before we close?
We are all set.
Okay, we are adjourned.